All right, it is seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three for Minatrista. Are we, I'm assuming we're recording?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just a friendly reminder, if you have cellphones with you, please put them on silent or airplane mode so that they don't disrupt our meeting. And I'd also like for you to join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone that's here this evening and also who may be watching on YouTube later on. I'm going to start with some introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, and Claudia Lacy. Next to Claudia, we have our city engineer, Alice Infowski with WSB. And then we have our director of public works, Gary Peters. And then we have our Ally Palfus, who is our director of administration. And then behind her, we have our city clerk, Don Motzko. To my right, I have Jasper Krugel, our city administrator. Brian Grimm is our finance director. And then we have Sarah Sensalo, who is with Kennedy and Graven. She is our city attorney. And then we have Paul Falls, who is our director of public safety, or we call him our police chief. So, all of you, welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. First order of business is to approve the agenda. I don't have any changes at this point. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Served.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Refkin, beat you to it. So, Ms. Refkin made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. This evening, we have some special people here with us this evening. But first, we're going to do a recognition. We have Adam Gepwah, who is with us, who has been our assistant, if you will, city engineer for a number of years. And he will, after this summer, be leaving us for greener pastures. But while during his tenure here at the city, we have really appreciated his participation and his commitment to our community. And because of that, we would like to recognize you, Adam, for that. I have a resolution I'd like to read. And so it's a resolution recognizing our outgoing engineering consultant, Adam Gepwah, and his contributions to the city of Minatrista. Whereas Adam Gepwah has supported the city of Minatrista over four and a half years as a consulting engineer. And whereas Adam Gepwah has provided superior service to the city of Minatrista and its residents. And whereas the city of Minatrista wishes to acknowledge Adam Gepwah and his contributions to the community, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minatrista, that we recognize and thank Adam for the service he provided to the city and wish him well on his future endeavors. Do I have a motion to that effect?
No motion.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And if you would like, I can hand you your special thank you.
Good luck, Adam.
Then we have another individual with us this evening, a special individual, Michael Kirkwood, who is the Minatrista representative to the LMCD or the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District. Good evening, Mr. Kirkwood, and thank you for joining us. I know you put in a lot of time on the LMCD and to come here and present, give us an update is also taking up your time as well. So, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council and other guests. You all set to go? Do you want me to run the clicker?
Yeah. It's on. Looks like it's on. Just the two arrows.
Oh, shoot.
Yep. See if it works. I got a pointer. There you go.
We started there. All right. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of things I wanted to give you as an update, introduction. I think Claudia and Peter may not have had a lot of exposure to the LMCD before, so I'll give you a little bit of background. And then what's going on lately is what you want to know, I think. So, interesting, a lake of this size, and so many communities involved, fourteen different cities, all send a representative, as you have, to adjudicate the issues that come up on the lake, of which there aren't many, surprisingly. But the importance for this city is, I counted the shoreline properties on the Hennepin County property map, and there were at least, counting is difficult to do sometimes, four hundred and seventy-one Minatrista shoreline owners. And I'll bet there's at least another hundred that are in outlot associations that have direct access to the lake and controls the lake. So, we have a pretty good supply of people who have an interest, a direct interest in the lake. The LMCD was organized along with the White Bear Lake Conservation District in nineteen sixty-seven as an opportunity to provide some regulatory controls over the lake, manage the issues that come up, and help resolve whatever issues are out there. But a lot of what we've been involved with, in my experience in the three going up, four years on the board, is managing docks, variances for docks, issues with neighbors and docks. So, docks gets to be off all the time. However, there are some significant issues, as you're well aware, of water quality, safety on the lake, funding, if you will, the ability of the sheriffs to be supporting us in controlling the safety on the lake as well. Just trying to touch on the high points here. So, the, I realize you don't have a copy of this presentation paper either. There's a number of public agencies that we are communicating with on an ongoing basis, as you see them listed there, along with the watershed districts, the sheriff's water patrol, three rivers park districts. Those are all agencies that we tend to coordinate, support the needs of the lake. Our primary mission is to preserve and enhance the Lake Minnetoka experience, and there are competing uses, as you might imagine, competing opinions as to how the lake should be used. So, we're often getting into discussions and issues around that. Balancing the boundaries for all the various users on the lake is another area where we spend a lot of our time. Just to highlight some of the more recent things that have been going on, I put in front of you a financial spreadsheet, which we'll look at in a few minutes. But what you'll notice is that there's been a reduction in requests from the cities as a result of being able to reallocate some of the reserve money. So, the result is there's less of a demand on funds this next year from the cities. We're seeing a lot of increased lake use, and we had several of the board members on the LMCD took an aggressive stance two years ago to find funding for an additional water patrol officer. So, the last two summers, we had an extra patrol officer on the lake, and even that was hardly enough. And what some people don't realize is that the Hennepin County Water Patrol covers all of Hennepin County. So, if there's a drowning in Bloomington in a pool, they disappear from the lake. Right when it could be the busiest day of the summer, they're gone, one or two perhaps. So, it's a challenge for us to be able to maintain coverage. So, we had some fundraising efforts. Two of the marina owners on the board went up and squeezed their other fellow marina owners and managed to raise a significant amount of funds so we could hire two more people for the lake control that summer and this summer as well. We're also faced with some issues recently with unlicensed charter operations, people with very expensive boats have figured out they can pay for their boat, if they can take someone out, turn to cruise, but they're not necessarily obeying all the safety concerns, getting your boats checked out and so forth. So, we're having to watch closely for that and manage that closely. We have several charter operations on the lake that are doing a very good job following all the safety procedures, inspections and whatever, so we want to honor them as well. Probably the hot issue for the lake has been the wake issue, and that's coming from several different kinds of boats. Most obvious is the wake boats, which have design elements that create large wakes, and also large cruisers on the lake as well that are creating wakes. We started this conversation about two years ago when some groups of neighbors were coming to the LMCD saying, "We can't be on the lake anymore. It's too rough. It's, we can't kayak, we can't be on paddleboards, we can't hardly fish in the lake anymore. There's so much wake traffic going on." And some of those early wake boaters were not being very attentive to their neighbors. They were playing loud music, and Grandma's down on the dock, and the boats going by with gangster rap on it. It's not being received very well. So, we had some pushback from about, an organization formed quickly of about five hundred people that said, "Do something about this." So, we've had long conversations about it. And last summer, we had public hearings, and both the boating community and the neighborhood communities came into us for a long meeting one day. And we decided, at least with the near future, we're going to extend the offshore setback to three hundred feet. It had been a hundred and fifty feet to try to reduce some of the wake impact on the shoreline and also spread people out just a little bit more so there's less risk of being hit. I say to you now, I don't know that that's going to be the end of it. There's research going on, both here at, me at Saint Anthony Falls Lab, which we've contributed to, to find the impacts of these wakes from deep water and shallow water and what the bottom conditions are, how they're affected by this. And we're suspecting that some of the early studies we've seen suggest that the water is being stirred up thirty feet down, in particular because of the angle of the motors and props on the wake boats is more down rather than horizontal. So, there's some impacts that are being looked at that may create some other needs to make adjustments somewhere in how the boats are allowed to operate on the lake. So, for now, we've set this three hundred foot from shore set off distance to try to reduce some of the impact of those. We have put two buoys, last year we did, we'll probably put them again this year, two buoys off of the surfside landing. I think you know where that is, most of you, inbound. And one buoy was at a hundred and fifty feet, one was at three hundred feet. We're trying to communicate, if people get used to what does three hundred feet look like. And it's a football field, if you can visualize that. But it's really hard in the water to get accurate distances. So, we may still have to find other ways to communicate that. But that's what we're looking for this summer, is people to be standing off three hundred feet if their boats are at speed. You've already met some of the people on the lake who are concerned about carp and other critters in the lake. And we're pleased to see that these local shoreline associations are coming together on their own, and we're doing some funding to support them. They came to you for additional funding, and those activities, I think, will help to clean up the lake as we look forward to the future. Other projects, I guess the next thing was, we were looking at having a low water declaration back in late September, and hopefully now that's going to go away and doesn't go the other way. I don't know why, it should have created some kinds of management nightmares as well. So, that's in essence, I think, all I need to share with you to get you comfortable with us. If you can find this document in front of you with the yellow stripe across it, just for your reference, this is the apportionment of the charges to all the different cities of Minatrista being in the middle. And you'll notice that this year, our assessment to the city went down by three thousand dollars as a result of changing and spending back some of the money that was in reserve. The only concern about that in our discussion at the board is, what if we have to come back to you in a year or two and say, "Wait a minute, now we need some more money to go the other way, and here's why." So, there was some discussion about, are we creating problems in the future? But we thought it was important to give it back to you if we weren't going to be spending it right away. The other documents that you had in front of you are just examples, if you've not seen them before, some of the publications that were coming, summer rules, we have winter rules, and docks, information on docks, because this is where we spend a lot of our time. The staff is figuring out where docks can go, and they've had several cases of conflicts, lawsuits over docks. It's an amazing area of passion, so. You remember that, bro.
Just a question, do you have any of these things available that we can have out in our lobbies so if people do come in, that would be a good idea?
Absolutely.
Says, a lot of people know where Minatrista City Hall is, but not necessarily where you're located. So, this would be great if we could get some.
So, any questions?
I have one.
Kathleen?
Does LMCD do anything with people watering from the lake for their yards?
My understanding is that that is a repairian right, that if you have waterfront access, that you are able to draw water from the lake without restriction. And that's, I can't verify that from a legal perspective, but that's kind of the generic understanding that I had. No one has ever said anything different to any of us on the LMCD.
They don't permit it, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that jive with your history?
Yeah, it's not permitted by the LMCD. I don't even think it's permitted by the DNR.
Right. I don't know that there's any restriction on it. Again, the repairian right world is a pretty intense area of the law. I mean, we've had lots of cases lately about repairian rights that go onto court, and we've won. The LMCD was right, and although we're not. But yeah, that's the one challenge we have about that. But yeah, if you can, if you can water, I know you guys have been beat up by watering issues. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I would just ask about policing jet skiers, you know.
Policing jet skiers?
Yeah.
More specific, is there a question?
Oh, well, they don't really stay three hundred.
Oh, yeah? You know, they're. How far enough offshore, right? Well, it goes back to the perspective of a police call the water. I mean, the three one one will do that for you, or not three one one.
Nine one one.
Or the water patrol's direct phone number. But we need to have them know that you have an issue. Now, will somebody be there in a few minutes?
No.
Probably not. But they need to know that it's being recorded as an issue. They do sometimes hang around in the weeds and watch for that kind of stuff. I've seen them do that off of my point.
We live very close to where people would be jet skiing if they rented the jet skis in Mound.
They're renting in Mound.
And we have four jet skis. We're pro jet skiers.
Sure.
But they're dangerous machinery if you're not used to driving on them. And you see these, you know, families renting them, and they're usually families or groups together, and then you've got four people on them that don't have experience. That's my biggest concern on the lake and has been for the last, you know, ever since they've, I want them to be successful.
Sure.
But it doesn't seem like they're really advising their clients on how to safely drive.
Well, I could encourage our staff to revisit that with the agencies I know you're talking about are over there, I think in the surfside area, because we see a lot of that traffic in front of our place too at Cedar Point. And some of them are pretty scary. And they are violating groups. They're supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet away from anybody else in the water. Not supposed to be jumping behind the wakes of larger boats and so on. So, there's a lot of cases where they are pushing the limits to violate being safe in their operation. Again, what we can do is have a revisit with the agencies that are renting the boats and see if we can put a heavier.
Pressure on them.
Pressure. I'm trying to get a better word. Pressure on that, because they are licensed, I believe, by us to be in that operation. So, we think we have the opportunity to take that away.
Yeah, I mean, it hits close to home. A neighbor across the street from us on Loring Drive, thirty-six years old, father of two was killed on a jet ski and only had it, you know, for two weeks, and by his best friend in a tragic accident because didn't know how to drive a jet ski.
Sure.
So, it's a real dangerous.
It's a lot of power.
A lot of power. And they go faster and faster now.
Yes, that's right. All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Felicity.
Thank you very much. All right. So, we don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard, and so we'll move on to consent agenda. And we're going to remove consent agenda item D. And what I'm going to request is that, it's been requested by a couple of council members to move that to a work session, possibly our next work session if it's not too full. So, our consent agenda items, any other ones you wish to remove? All right. With that then, our consent agenda items include, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three; B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three; C is a resolution to approve our claims; and E is a resolution to approve a final plat of Halsted Hill. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E?
Served.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So, next we move on to our public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. So, I'm just going to kind of give you a little bit of background. When the notices went out, there was one tiny little glitch. The time of the meeting was not mentioned in your letter that you received. And so what we're going to do is open the public hearing this evening. Those of you that are here and would like to make a comment regarding the assessment, you can do so. And then we're going to hold the public hearing open until our April seventeenth meeting, when other people may or may not be here as well. So, you have a little, so you have another opportunity, but feel free to talk now. You don't have to come back at the next meeting. But also, if you wish to oppose the assessment, we will need written notification from you either tonight or any time prior to or on the evening of April seventeenth. We do have one letter already from a gentleman opposing the, I haven't read it yet, but I'm assuming opposing the assessment, and I know he'll be here probably wanting to speak as well, from Mr. Richard Silverstein and Colleen Carter. So, you can put that in the record, and I will give you this notice here. And then also, the assessments, we will, they will not go on your tax record or on your taxes until two thousand and twenty-four, payable in twenty-four. If you would like to prepay them prior to that date without any interest, you have to pay them on or before November first of this year. So, with that, I'll just give you a brief background. We've been working on this project since June of last year, and this is kind of the final steps in the process. Tonight, we're not here to talk with you or have you talk with us about the project itself. If you have questions regarding the project, specifically also, if you have questions or concerns regarding your specific property, I would highly recommend you would get much more time, if you will, at, call Jasper Krugel, our city administrator. Talk to him. If he can't answer your question regarding the project itself, he will direct you to the individual or individuals that can. So, tonight, this public hearing is in regards to hear your input regarding the assessments. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have a public hearing for proposed assessments for the two thousand and twenty-three street reconstruction and utility improvement, which is city project number zero one dash twenty-three. That is for the Morning View, East View, and West Wood Edge, Wood Edge area. If anybody is here this evening, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is that okay if I, if we do the public hearing now? Or did you want to do any kind of presentation?
We have a presentation, but refer to Jasper on when the best time to do that would be.
We can either do it now or during the approval process, oh, excuse me, of the, in the business side of the agenda.
Okay, let's, let's do that, and then we can hear from the residents first. So, if there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against the assessments, we also have another public hearing, and that is for the proposed assessments for the two thousand and twenty-three street improvement project number zero two dash twenty-three. That project is the North Arm Fielding Trail area. So, if you're here for either of those assessments, please, I'll start on this side. You'd have to come forward, and by state statute, you do have to list, say your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Nothing? Anybody over here? We'll start second row here.
I guess I can.
Okay, come forward.
My name is Lee Koczykow. I'm from the North Arm, five six eight five, North Arm. And I've lived in this area for fifteen years now. I was unfortunate enough to live along the country road forty-one, which had the project for forty-four, that had the project for about three years. There was no assessment. So, this is very new to me. How do we figure out when we have to pay for the assessment, when you will get assessment, and when you don't? Yeah, I was unfortunate enough to live along the house that had that construction in either areas, but in one area we're being assessed, and the other area we didn't get assessed.
Okay, so I'll just explain real quick. On forty-four, that was a metropolitan council project, and they paid for that. And so, no properties on County Road forty-four were assessed for that. So, here tonight, like I said, this assessment is in the amount of ten thousand dollars per parcel, and then you can pay the full amount if you want, buyer before November first of two thousand and twenty-three this year. If you don't want to pay the full amount, that's okay. It will go on your property taxes, and you will have twenty years to pay it. So, it'll be amortized over twenty years, and there is a five point five percent interest on that as well. So, I don't know if that helps you answer your question.
No, that part I understand. I was just understanding, when does the city make the decision that the residents have to pay for the old constructions and when you don't?
So, we have a policy, a good question. We have a policy, and when we reconstruct a road or we do a reclamation project, which is North Arm, then we have a policy that says we assess fifty percent of that project. And then what we did this time is we actually hired a firm to go out and tell us exactly how much, because we were concerned that maybe it might be too much, we can only assess you the benefited amount. And that firm came back and they said that the benefit to the properties is around ten thousand dollars, and that's what you're being assessed.
Okay, so they calculated the benefit to the property.
Correct. Yes, correct.
And then you mentioned something that we can do if we don't like the idea that we can do something in writing. On what legal stand do we have to just say, "Hey, I don't think it's going to add my property an extra ten thousand dollars?" Because like in our case, we just built a house. I don't know if there's anything else I can do to improve the property value of it.
Right. I don't know, Sarah, if you want to weigh in real quick to kind of explain it, because there's a process that you would have to go through.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you had previously stated, if you wish to object to your assessment, you must do that either at this hearing or at the next hearing, which will be on the seventeenth. So, it has to be before the close of that hearing. It does need to be done in writing, so you can't just get up and talk. You actually have to write something, and you need to sign it saying you're objecting to your assessment. And then that needs to be given to the city clerk in the hearing, or if you're at the meeting, to the mayor. And then if you do that and you decide you want to go forward with objecting to your assessment, then you must appeal the assessment to the district court within thirty days after the adoption of the assessment. So, thirty days after April seventeenth.
Okay, so you would have until May seventeenth to file in district court?
Correct.
In district, so in addition to filing with the city, we need to also file in the district court?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. And on what legal grounds could we do it, just because we don't like it, or is there certain things we need to present for disputes like this? Again, I only ask because it's very expensive, one of the lessons. So, I'd like to understand what my rights are.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm the city's attorney, not your attorney, so I can't give you legal advice, but what I can tell you is you do need to prove that there was no special benefit to your property. The city has already proved up its case. It had hired an appraiser to determine that there was at least ten thousand dollars of special benefit associated with the, with the assessment. So, you would need to basically bring something that, you know, counteracts that, that proposition by the city.
I, thank you very much. I don't want to take any more valuable time with great experience.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's see. Richard, did you want to say anything?
Richard Silverstein, fourteen fifty-five, Postwood Drive. Since I wrote a letter, I should probably say something, but the, the letter that's sent out said, "If you don't do something like today, you have no rights in the future."
No.
If someone did something today, I know something that's like ten thousand dollars. Seems like a lot of money, and that's, I would ask you to clarify if you guys are making any decisions today or if the whole thing is going to kick down tonight.
So, we won't, we won't, if you will, certify the assessments or, or.
Adopt the assessments.
Adopt the assessments tonight because we won't do that until April seventeenth. So, if you have some, okay, right. So, all right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to make a comment? All right. And thank you for coming, and thank you for making your comments. We, we do appreciate it. So, with that then. So with that then, I'm going to close the public hearing.
We're leaving it open?
I'm sorry, thank you, yes. Reopening it, reopening it. All right, again, then we will close it on the seventeenth, okay. With that, we'll move on to our business items. And if you're interested in the project itself, I believe that Madam Gepo will be doing a presentation on the project, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jasper, you have the, hold on.
One, one point of clarity.
I'm sorry.
We have two assessment hearings.
I did two.
Do we do, do we open them both at the same time? Okay.
And, and I reopened them. Just for clarification. All right.
And Adam, did you want the assessment hearing slide or the other slide deck?
I think it's incorporated in the main. Just the one.
This one or this one?
We have a lot of projects going on, right.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, members of the council. There you go, sir. So we have a presentation briefly prior to the next agenda item for considering award of the contract. And a lot of these slides you have seen before and members of the audience have likely seen before. And really talking about project scope and I'm gonna kind of breeze through those. But if I go to a question, you have questions, let me know. At the end, I'm just gonna highlight the project financing and that's gonna kind of paint a picture for these agenda items. Twenty twenty-three Street Reconstruction Utility Improvement Project. We are looking at the neighborhood of East View, Morning View, and Westwood. Full street and utility reconstruction. Completely remove the existing street section. Go down and replace the water main facilities, repair some sanitary sewer facilities, and install a storm sewer drainage system. While we're there, build the road back up. Put in a fifty-year design life street section with fabric, sand, gravel, launches of pavement, and then new concrete curb and gutter. So we are urbanizing the street, whereas now it's just rural with no curb. We'll be putting curb. This is Minneapolis Avenue, which was similarly reconstructed in 2021. Concrete curb and gutter helps with stormwater management. We're keeping the alignment of the roadway and the width of the roadway, kind of overall geometry relatively the same. We have to change some grades to help blend this new curb into the yards. And we're restoring the yards with sod, in some cases seed, where they're close to sensitive waters, wetlands, sensitive. Sanitary sewer structures is kind of the lid of the structure. You can see we'd be rebuilding it with new rings and help stop info, inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. Water main, we're upsizing and replacing the water main from six inch to eight inch, which is a, and we're doing PVC, which is a corrosive resistant material. We'll be replacing the water surfaces up to the curb stop, the shut-off valve for each property that has a water surface. Storm sewer, this is kind of what it looks like under construction, but we'll be installing a series of reinforced concrete pipes and structures that's gonna convey the water from the street out to Lake Minnetonka. And we're incorporating things like some structures to help remove sediment before it goes into the lake. So we just opened up the assessment hearing. Here's some more information about Chapter 429 process, which operates as the city to go forward with assessing. All properties within the project are proposed to be assessed on a per parcel basis. The residential unit assessment rate is $10,000. There are two non-residential parcels. We have the Gillespie Park and that assessment rate has been determined at $20,000 and then the River Valley Church at $23,000. There are hardship deferrals and certainly if anyone here tonight or listening on to the recording has questions about those, city staff can help answer those. The payment term is over twenty years at 5.5% interest rate. So this is kind of a total project cost history for the council and everyone to see how the costs of the projects have progressed since we originally budgeted and planned for the project. You can see when, this was just in the identifying stage back before June, when the project got kicked off. We were looking at about 5.2 million and that was without knowing a whole lot of details and doing investigations, topographic survey. Once we did that initial investigation, got the coins, completed the feasibility report, we reduced that total project cost down to 4.3 million. And at that time, we used, we planned for a 10% construction contingency because we have not finalized the design and 20% for indirects such as engineering, legal, administrative fees. Once we complete final design, we're pretty certain of what's going in the ground and so we reduce the construction contingency down to 5%. The indirects are still the same at 20%. And we brought an update to the council that we assumed it would be about 4.35 million. And that was prior to opening bids. Luckily, the city had a pretty competitive project, lots of bidders, and the low bid received, which we will be talking about, reduced the total project cost to about 4.18 million. That still includes the 5% construction contingency. But we've updated the indirects now that we know the final construction cost. We can project out how much more indirect time it will take to administer this project through construction. So that's how it's evolved and I kind of mentioned this, but construction contingency is always wise to incorporate that because stuff will come up in construction and there will be change orders. And if you, if you can think about, well, I set aside 5% to cover that and then it's, it doesn't hurt as much when they come up in the field. So that's what that's for. And then the indirect fees have a summary of what the council had approved to date for this project. That would be the preliminary design and final design. And that was approximately $269,000. And then the proposal that we'll talk about a little bit later is included. And that's for construction administration of $407,000. And so that totals to that roughly 19.3% of indirect cost. So that's how we come to those total project cost numbers. The indirect fees are an estimate of hours needed to complete the project and are pretty well dependent on the contractor's schedule. And so as we move forward, if the project moves forward, we'll get a schedule from the contractor. It'll detail out when to plan to work and that should closely track the hours programmed for it. And it's certainly not a lump sum by any means. And if the work gets done quicker, less time is needed out there. It's just an hourly not to exceed fee. So I'll pause there. The next one is kind of just a breakdown of the city's responsibility and especially assess numbers and I can walk through that. But are there any questions on this previous slide by the council? So this is in your packet as well in the agenda item. And it just breaks it down how we have the contract set up, which is surface improvements, storm sewer improvements, sanitary sewer and water main improvements. And as we talked about, the surface and storm are where the assessment funding gets applied to for the city's policy. And we were given by the special benefit consultation, the special assessment amount of $853,000. So that's broken up 50% into the surface schedule and the remainder into the storm, the storm sewer schedule. So the, the city's responsibility is the balance of that total project cost of about 4.19 minus the assessed amount of $853,000. So this is a further breakdown and there's a lot of numbers. So I apologize if you want to kind of chew on it and then maybe come up with some questions a little later. But just to show how the policy would, would compute assessments for this project, but you'll recall we did a special benefit analysis. So we were just told $10,000. So it didn't, it wasn't really based on the bits. But if you look at the assess, at the bottom line, there's the one I'd like you to focus on. The assessment with a 50% policy would have amounted to about just over $1 million assessed. And so the proposed assessment using the special benefit analysis came in under that. So if that doesn't track, I could answer some questions on it. But it just goes to show the benefit that residents receive by doing this special benefit analysis. Same benefit a lot in this presentation. And that's our last slide. So any questions by the council on this? And then I think it'll kind of feed into the agenda items.
Okay, all right.
So the next agenda item is considering award of the contract. I don't have the agenda in front of me, I just have my items.
Let's see, I'm sorry. So we have street reconstruction project, award the contract. Yeah, for, for that, for the Morning View, the one that you were just talking about. So we're looking at awarding that contract.
Okay, perfect. So the city received the bids at a previous meeting on February 28th. So you got a summary of the bids that were received at that meeting. And the lowest responsive bid, as detailed in the bid tabulation, was received from Latour Construction of Maple Lake, Minnesota. And their grand total bid amount was $3,336,943.42. We included in the packet a list of references. We've also checked with professional colleagues on this contractor just because they haven't worked in town in any recent memory. And we did receive favorable feedback and so we were happy to hear that. It's going to be funded, as we kind of just talked about through the presentation, a combination of city funds and special assessments. And the estimated total project cost, including the contingency and indirects, is four hundred, or $4,180,488.59. So staff recommends awarding the contract for the 2023 Street Reconstruction and Utility Improvement Project, City Project Bill 123, to Latour Construction. And I can take any questions that the council may have.
Council questions? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract for the City Project 01-23. That would be for the Morning View, East View, and West Wood Edge area. Awarding it to Latour Construction, I think it's called, in the amount of, I believe it's $3,336,943.42. Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we're gonna go, we're not gonna do the assessment roll at this time. We'll be doing that next time. And then there's approving a professional services agreement for that same project.
That's right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So continuing on, we talked a little bit about the construction administration phase of the project, which is the point where the contractors awarded the contract and they go out and get started and that gets administered. WSB has provided a proposal to perform those construction engineering services. And it's based off of a 26-week schedule, full-time. We know that the, the scope of the work is rather intense. And so we think that it might take the entire construction season up until basically the trucks stop running because the, the plants have closed down. We will have a detailed schedule from the contractor after reaching out tomorrow, letting them know that the contract was awarded. And so our proposal includes the time for that construction timing. The estimated fee is $107,617. And that calculates out to approximately that 19.3% indirects. The proposal's included, the letter proposal, I should say, is also included here and it goes into detail in our scope of services. Really it's providing project management throughout all of construction, keeping track of the contractor's schedule, processing applications for payment when they get paid for their work each month, working through any change orders, that sort of thing that comes up. Also, a very detailed communication engagement component, where we'll be relaying information to residents of full-time inspector on site to help residents with questions, access concerns, that sort of thing. Still continue to host the website, do weekly updates as needed. And then we are also proposing, just because there are multiple projects in town and this kind of will overlap with the other projects, more of a construction hotline slash email that, one-stop shop for people. So if they're not sure who to get hold of, we'll still be available. But they'll be kind of more of someone to manage calls and questions as they come. The other component is the staking, having a survey crew on site to lay out the design in the field. And that's how the contractor builds the project. So that's a critical component. And then lastly, as they're building it, there's construction materials testing to make sure that materials that they're using to build the project meet certain specifications. And it's, you know, particularly this, you can think of this as backfilling and density. So the road settling, the earth that's been in place for so long is now being disturbed. And so we monitor how they put the street utilities back together. So that's that component. And then lastly, environmental compliance. So monitoring the whole site from a stormwater erosion and runoff perspective during construction. And so we have certified inspectors that review the site and make sure the contract is compliant for erosion control. So on the next sheet of the proposal here, I kind of break it down by those categories I just discussed. And it certainly answer any questions that the council may have. We have the, the full fee spreadsheet kind of detailing out the hours by task as well. So I'd be happy to take any questions on that.
So I ran the numbers a bunch this weekend. And you put the proposed indirect cost at 19.3%. But based on the bid amount and the 5% contingency, I don't get the 676,618 you guys have. I got 676,231 and change. So is there different rounding in there that you used? Or how, the numbers don't line up?
So the, yeah, thanks for the question. The 19.3% is an approximate indirect percentage. So after the three, there's more numbers. And that just works out based on, because we put the fee together based on hours. And so it doesn't come out to a nice clean number when you just use hours of work, if, if that tracks. So yeah, the 19.3 is an approximation. It's really a couple more digits, maybe a one, two, three after that. And the, the one thing to keep in mind too is that the proposal is an estimated time. And so that's why we're comfortable with the rounding there. That it's very likely that it can come in at 19.2 or, you know, 19.25 really when we're all said and done.
How is Matt going to be on site for 1,200 hours?
So we will.
Cause he's listed on two other projects too.
Yeah, so we do have, what we do at WSB is we do hire people in preparation for projects. A lot of communities are doing projects this year. Matt's been a longtime inspector, even back when I was inspecting in this community. And so he's the go-to for us. And so that's who we have identified. We also have a supplemental inspector too. But it is very likely that we will need help from other experienced inspectors. And certainly there are more people that have worked in town here in Minnetonka. A lot of the development, development work has brought in different WSB inspectors. And so we're kind of working on the personnel standpoint, but we wanted to portray that Matt, who is, knows the town, right? He knows how to do these projects. He knows the residents, knows city staff, is the one that we're, is gonna be leading those construction efforts. And he's gonna be really busy.
Good questions, yeah, yeah. Claudia, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, Peter?
No.
Anne?
No.
Any other ones? All right, are we in agreement then on the, on the services?
Maybe just get a clarification on one. I just noticed in the memo, and I don't know if it's consistent between the two proposals, one references a cost reimbursable basis on hours and then another says hourly not to exceed. I guess to me, I've always been better with the hourly not to exceed, especially with that dollar amount. Or, yeah, you need to come back to council with additional dollars needed if possible. But there seems, when I was reading a little closer, there seems to be a little bit of a.
Madam Mayor, if I may address that question. So certainly our goal is to, once we start approaching a fee that we presented to the council. And, and if we think that we will be in excess of that fee because we are in construction, we do intend to come back to the council. But understand that there's, there might be a certain point where, you know, because we're construction, we might, we might edge a little over that approved amount. But because it is construction and because of our relationship with the city, we do look to come and discuss with the council if we anticipate we'll be over that amount for construction services.
I would hope that you would discuss that with staff and our administrator first before that were to happen.
Oh, yes.
So that at least staff can give you either a go-ahead or a nod of approval. But I would also hope that you wouldn't go over this amount since it is a rather large amount. But obviously, we do want the project oversight and we want very, very good management of the project because it is so large and we understand there'll be lots of inconveniences for our residents. So we want you to be on top of that too at the same time. So manage the budget. So manage the budget and do a great job, both. So, um, all right. Any other questions?
Does that answer my question?
Does, that's.
Mine, yeah, I mean, I think as long as there's, yeah, communication, we should be fine.
Yeah, all right. So, uh, do I have a motion then to approve professional services agreement for the city project, for the twenty twenty-three street improvement project, City Project Number Zero, should be zero-one, right? Zero-two, twenty-three?
Zero-one.
Zero-one, twenty-three, right. I must, might have jumped ahead. Sorry. Yep, thank you. Zero-one, twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next, uh, we have the, um, street project. This would be the North Arm Fielding Trail Project. That is City Project Number Zero-two dash twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Chris Bogers with WSB. Um, I'm gonna set up things pretty similar to what Adam just did. We're just gonna talk about a couple of the projects now. So, um, obviously, this is the twenty twenty-three street remodel project in the North Arm area. Um, we are doing a full-depth, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I have this here. Um, Northern Drive, Trails and Road, Trails and Circle, and Timber Trail. Um, we will be doing a full-depth renovation on this project, similar to, um, but not a full-depth of the pavement. As Adam explained, this will be just the top layer of pavement and aggregate to reestablish a solid base to move forward, move forward in time to reestablish a good road. And we will be keeping the same geometrics of the road the same. Um, other additional street improvements we'll be doing, um, we will be doing some minor ditch work and some minor drainage work with some of the CMP, um, storm drains out there. We will be, um, replacing them with RCP. Um, again, the road will most closely match what is out there today. Um, we will not be putting any curb gutters on this road. It will still stay a permanent section.
Row.
Row.
Row. Row section, yeah.
And then we will be reestablishing yards with some as well. Um, as I talked about, some of the CMP storm supers that are out there are either under capacity or damaged. So we will be replacing those with reinforced concrete painting. Um, again, as Adam stated, um, the city will be going through the, um, state section four twenty-nine process, um, went through a special benefit analysis, also coming to that same, um, value of ten thousand dollars per residential unit. Um, we do have one Gulf Horse Groves that will be at a forty-five thousand dollar residential, or special property. You know, it is a combination of those three properties along the north side of Northern. Um, again, um, any hardship deferrals or questions about the assessment over the twenty-year period at five and a half percent? I would love to have, answer any questions before the device and continue as Adam already briefly talked about.
Okay.
Um, again, a general overview of kind of where we are and what we are paying for for the project. The total assessment with the forty-three properties and the one Gulf Horse property comes to a total assess, accepted value of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, the two, total project cost would be that one point one three million dollars. So roughly, the six hundred and sixty-four would be the responsibility of the city. Is there any other questions about this particular project?
I don't think so.
Awesome. Otherwise, I will move into the, um, award of the contract portion of the other items.
Okay.
So we have the award of contract for the twenty twenty-three street remodel projects. Um, this again was originally kind of, sorry. So we did, um, we opened up bids and had a bid opening on February eighth of this year. Uh, we did have nine bidders on this particular project. The low bidder was Asphalt Service Technologies Corporation of St. Joseph at a low bid of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six and twenty-seven cents. Um, I am, um, pushing to have that be accepted and, uh, for the contract to Asphalt Service Technologies Incorporated. Um, as you can see with our new low bid cost, we will be at a grand total for the project with the assessment of the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The total cost would be at one point one three nine. Um, I do recommend the city council action for this project.
Okay, thank you. Um, council, any questions?
Are you familiar with this contractor?
Uh, yes, they have worked in the city. Um, I don't believe it was last year, but they have worked in the city in the past.
Um, Madam Mayor, if I may, um, so Aztec, Aztec has done work in the city, um, mostly with crack fill projects, which is a maintenance project. Um, but we did check, um, around with, um, with some of our colleagues on larger-scale projects such as this. And they confirmed that they are, they have the equipment and personnel to perform this type of project and that there weren't any concerns with, um, with the work that had been performed. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, good, good question. Okay, other questions? All right, so, um, looking for a motion to award the contract for the city's, uh, project, street project, uh, zero-two dash two-three, uh, to Asphalt Surface Technologies in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Just one question. Are they gonna be doing the mill and overlay as well that I'm assuming right there?
Um, that is actually gonna be.
Is that gonna be?
Different company.
It is, okay. All right, cause I thought, well, if they're right there, all right. Um, so we're gonna skip the, adopt the assessment role for now. And then we're gonna move on to a professional services agreement for this same project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, again, uh, professional service agreement, as Adam so eloquently stated, um, basically would be to take this already finalized project and bring it for construction. We will be doing construction administration, working with the contractor throughout the summer. This particular project, we project to have a seven-week span. And over that seven weeks, um, we have a projected total of a seventy-nine thousand dollars and six, seventy-nine thousand and sixty dollars to perform with these, or the services of construction administrative, surveying, staking, material testing, um, all that is broken down kind of in our proposal. Um, with that being said, the total, um, indirect cost, including this new seventy-nine thousand dollars, is actually an indirect cost of, or indirect percentage of sixty percent, which is under our, um, normal goal of twenty percent. Is there any questions about the other questions?
Nope, I think we're good. Is there, um, a motion then? I'm looking for a motion to approve professional services agreement with WSB for the twenty-three street improvement project, City Project Number Zero-two dash two-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So now we're moving on to the overlay project, so, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Fund.
Thank you so much. So the twenty twenty-three overlay project will be our third project in the city. Um, we have a number of areas on this that are shown with map, Hunter's Trail, Painter's Creek. That's where I'm trying to remember all of them. Painter's Creek Neighborhood, uh, King's Point Road, Sunny Brook Circle, Hunter's Trail from Highway Seven to Bandi Lane. Uh, this total project, we, uh, um, put out for bid as well. Just le, just this last February, we received, um, eight total bids for this project. And we are proposing to accept the bid of, I'm sorry, I have a wrong. Everything, sorry. Um, the low bidder in this case was GMH Asphalt Corporation, who did the, um, recon last year.
Yeah.
Um, in the total amount of one point three seven, or three-three-seven million dollars. We have the bid summary attached as well. And I will be looking for a motion to accept the bid and award that to GMH.
Just a question, um, Chris, do you know, is our eight bids, is that a good number? I mean, is that a lot or is that little or what's?
In my personal experience, uh, five is a lot. So, uh, we had eight, nine, and I believe, did you have ten or fourteen? Yeah, sorry, fourteen. So yes, this, uh, was a very competitive year, especially in the city. So they were, and all of, all of them had very, very tight bids. So yes, I would say that is a lot.
All right, um, any other questions? Otherwise, um, we're looking for a motion to receive the bids and award a contract for the twenty twenty-three overlay project to, uh, GMBH?
GMH.
GMH, okay, well, close enough, right? No, just kidding. Okay, GMH.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Vickery made that second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And then we'll, uh, obviously for, um, mill and overlays, we don't have any special assessments. So we'll move on to the professional services agreement for the mill and overlay projects.
Yeah, for the last, last agenda, I have here, we have the professional services. Um, in this case, we, um, have a total working schedule, um, of twelve weeks, in this case. Um, our construction staff has put together an estimate of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents to perform those similar services. Um, this is a, obviously, you saw, this is a very wide, wide area, so this will be well taken care of. Um, this is coming in right at our indirect cost of twenty percent as we were, um, so shooting for. Is there any other questions about the proposal for professional services?
How come this project has a project manager and a construction project manager when the other two didn't?
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, so with this project in particular, we do have a component that's state aid. And in our experience, um, devoting, um, an additional person for the state aid component because, um, it tends to be very particular about how we submit things. We felt it was in the city's best interest to dedicate a person to provide that, uh, assistance during the construction of this project so that we can get things, um, submitted to the state and, and accepted. That's a good question.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? All right, then, um, is there a motion to approve professional services for the twenty-three overlay project for City Project O-three dash two-three? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So that takes care of all of your participation here this evening. Thank you. Um, is Todd gonna be here this evening?
No, Madam Mayor, uh, he is not tonight. He'll be back on April seventeenth, so we'll, we'll get our fix of Todd Hagen there.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
And he was, you know, at the February twenty-eighth meeting, so this is one of the interim steps just to, uh, pretty much, um, as, as the resolution says, um, I was gonna say, well, now that we approved all these proj, projects, how, how are we paying for it? To everybody. No, I think we've, we've got a lot of discussions as far as, yeah, the upcoming bond sale here. So, uh, um, so this is on page, uh, one-seventeen in the packet. And, uh, it does several things here and maybe I'll even just read what the, uh, we're doing here. So basically, we're, it's a resolution to authorize the sale of the general obligation bond, series twenty twenty-three A in the maximum aggregate amount of seven point five million. And that has come down to our original estimate was about eight million, but with these bids coming in slightly better on almost, on each of the three projects. So we were able to get that down to, um, that about seven and a half million. And then, um, basically, you know, it gets into them technical terms as far as fixing their form and specifications, delivering payment. And I guess the, the thing that we're doing here that we've done, I think, once before is, um, establishing that pricing committee. And, um, we did talk about that at the last meeting, that that committee would consist of Mayor Whalen, Councilmember Refkin, Mr. Krugel, myself, and, uh, Mr. Hagen.
Mm-hmm.
I think we've set that up for a tentative closing of, uh, April sixth right now.
Mm-hmm.
So there's, um, that is all ready to go within, once, we hopefully will get a lot of bids, just like we've talked about tonight on the, uh, construction. So I will hopefully get, you know, eight, ten, twelve financial, uh, companies to come in with their, their bids. And, uh, have, um, competitive bids there. And we're, we're estimating in the reports that, you know, uh, Mr. Hagen attached here, uh, you know, still that three and a half, four percent true interest cost, hopefully. So I think, uh, the markets, you know, sort of bounces around a little bit, but it's still in that, uh, that area. Um, so, yeah, I think that's the, uh, main goals tonight is to have, to adopt the resolution to basically set that amount of the bonding at, um, you know, no more than, or, you know, that seven and a half million. I think the actual, uh, run that we did was about seven million, three hundred and fifty thousand, based on when you add everything together.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you if you added all, it's a little less than seven point five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's giving, I think, just a little legal room if, if there's some premium or something. But I think the principal amount we should need is the seven million, three hundred and fifty thousand adjusted for, you know, premium or discount or whatever. And then, um, and then you had to, I guess, just, uh, formalize that, that pricing committee. That way you would, uh, you know, call, dial in and talk to, uh,
Right.
that day of the, uh, the.
Sale.
Sale, yep, yep. And then, uh, basically bring back those results. And Mr. Hagen will be on, here on the April seventeenth, present the results of the sale.
Okay. Questions? You know, you, you heard, we've been talking about this for a number of times and gone over a lot of it. So, um, do you wanna, uh, motion then for the, um, pricing committee?
Oh, just to designate, I know the memo, yeah, I think the, the resolution.
The memo said, but it just said council members. So I think, um, just for clarification, it would be Kathleen Refkin, Councilmember Refkin. Again, do you need a motion for that?
That's fine. I suppose, or, I mean, it probably would be.
Could hurt.
Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion that, uh, myself, um, the mayor and, um, Councilmember Refkin be, um, appointed to the pricing committee, which will be meeting on April sixth. Uh, so it would be prior to our next meeting. So is there a second to that?
Second.
Set, thank you, Ms. McGregor. Um, any other questions? You'll trust us? You know where we live, right?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And then, um, a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation bond series in the maximum aggregate amount of seven point five million, fixing their form and specifications, directing the execution and delivery, providing for their payment, and establishing a pricing committee, which we've already done. So is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy, Claudia, and is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions, comments? I just hope we can get that three and a half to four percent. That would be fabulous. So let's, uh, cross our fingers on that one. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So with that, that concludes all of our business items and we'll move on to administrative items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just have one item. Uh, the League of Minnesota Cities Conference is coming up. Uh, you should have received some information about that. Uh, I believe Mayor Whalen is gonna go.
Yep, I will be there.
I will be there as well. So if you're interested in going, let us know. We can get you signed up. Uh, if you want more information about kind of what it's about, please let us know, um, either re, uh, reach out to Mayor Whalen or myself because we've both, both been there. It's generally a pretty good, pretty good event. Um, it's in Duluth this year. It's, uh, Wednesday through, well, mostly Thursday and Friday is what it is.
Thursday, Friday, right.
That's all I have.
That's all? That's it? Wow, okay. Any other staff reports? None, okay, and we'll start with, uh, council reports, anything? Ms. Lacy, anything?
Uh, I went to the West Tonka Commerce, uh, and. Yes, Commerce and Community, uh, maybe, I think the ESP Center, it was lovely. Um, met some of the new businesses, um, Arborist, um, Lowering Landscape, it was wonderful. And, um, um, a new marketing firm called Plaid Moose that looked very.
And a new marketing firm called Plaid Moose that looked very interesting. And it was really just generally really great meeting and nice to see that there's some home businesses and small local businesses, you know, popping up around Minatrista.
Yeah, nice. Thank you. Peter?
Well, I attended the higher Sarah Creek Watershed District on Thursday. And we talked about projects for this, this year. Of course, last meeting, I mentioned the work on South Whale Tail that will be cleaning up that lake. So that's pretty exciting. All the other projects so far seem to be out of Minatrista. They'll be doing some testing of Lake Sarah to see how much phosphorus pollution is in yet. And then they'll also be doing an outreach to the people that live around Lake Rebecca to try and reduce the inflow of phosphorus there too. So I think that those are the main projects.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anne, anything?
Um, the Gillespie Center, basically, I did update with Susan Navertill, who's the ex-president. There's a new president now, and they're starting to add more activities to their agenda. And I'll give an update on that next time I attend their meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Jasper and I attended City Day on the Hill on March ninth. We heard from the League of Minnesota Cities regarding legalizing marijuana, about housing regulations, and then some additional bills before the House and Senate. Lieutenant Governor Flanagan stated there were, how many new bills they were going to be passing. And when she had people asking her about how much they were going to do, she specifically said buckle up. Yeah. Democrats are pressing to raise the license fees tabs by ten dollars because people with EDs are not buying gas and therefore there's less money in the road budget. They are not discussing how people with EDs will be contributing more to the road budget outside of the ten dollars though. We did meet individually with Representative Myers. He expressed interest in presenting a bonding bill for our water infrastructure. He expects another round for the bonding later this year. As Jasper said, we already got updated quotes from AD2S. And he has emailed Andrew some info to possibly start that process. Andrew did state that the social security tax reduction or elimination did not make it out of committee. Jasper and I stressed local control on housing, on schools, and on the marijuana businesses if that does pass. Also discussed the Highway seven corridor and safety concerns. We did meet with Senator Morrison as well, again stressing the importance of local control and school curriculum and how local community knows what's best for our residents, specifically with regard to housing and how imperative it is that cities get to decide what their housing requirements are. We discussed the Highway seven corridor issues with her as well. I asked what her plans were for keeping residents in Minnesota, since neighboring states are all going towards lower or zero state income tax. And she responded by stating they won't be raising taxes. Discussed rate choice of voting because while we were in there, she had to go present it to committee. She feels it would be great for Minnesota. I disagreed with her and stated my reasons. That is currently before, it's being presented still. So if anyone listening or watching has any thoughts on it, I recommend reaching out to our representatives. Yeah, any questions?
So, no, thank you. Yeah, I, unfortunately, I had a family emergency and was out of, was not able to attend. So thank you for doing that and representing our city. And looking forward to seeing what happens at the state legislature specifically regarding the, the water bonding issue. Obviously, that's a big, important issue for us. So with that, yeah, I'll be attending other meetings coming up next month. So with that, I think we are done and we can adjourn and go home if you want. But we first have to adjourn. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. We are adjourned and you can all go home if you'd like. And I'm sure staff would appreciate it.